Okay, public hearings.
Okay, tonight we have two public hearings. First one is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code to add child daycare to the C-3 zone in the city code. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice of a public hearing, given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, on or as near as 8:00 PM as possible, common council chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed amendment to the zoning code, section 47521, C-3 general business districts, to add the following: Use allowed with planning board approval, child daycare with certain conditions such as possibly a square foot minimum for the child daycare center, a minimum area for outside of play area, a required off-street drop-off area. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against a proposed amendment. And this is by order of the common council. And this was published in the Times-Held Record on May 30th and May 31st, and also on our city website. Also, for the record, this is a review, this needs review by the planning department for the county, and they have 30 days to get back, and it was put in on the May 26th.
It's time, the public hearings now open.
Yes, I'd like to give you the genesis of the request. Sterling Park, not condos, apartments, on James P. Kelly Way. As you know, our C-3 zoning requires first-floor commercial. Under the existing C-3 zoning, adult daycare is permitted. For some reason, child daycare is not. We tried to look back in our minutes and records to find out why that was, and we've met with our economic development people and the city attorneys to try to figure out what the exclusion was, what's the danger of having childcare permissible in some of the zone, in a C-3 zone. The only thing we came up with was concerns about drop-off, that if there was a daycare, say, on North Street or West Main with no parking, that we would create a situation like the day nursery. And that might be the genesis of the reason why it was excluded. So therefore, we put into the, we're recommending that in the zoning, that there is required off-street drop-off, no matter what the address is, but within that C-3 zone. Sterling Park came to us, they have an opportunity, as you know, they have about 300-plus units onboard, additional units besides what they have up, obviously have a demand for daycare. It's a lot of commuters that are living there. And we have, as I said, examined every potential negative, and with the restrictions that we're putting in place, we don't see any. So the requests came from Sterling Park through my office, and I introduced it to the common council, requesting that the zoning be changed to allow for child daycare.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to address the council? Any member on the council? Any comments? Alderman Kleiner.
Does the state regulate daycare?
Yes.
Yeah.
They regulate, they don't regulate the...
Whether it's allowed or not.
Foning issues, yeah. They don't regulate saying that you have to have X amount of off-street parking. And at least, nothing that we could find. But we wanted to make sure that, we clarify that we don't want someone operating a daycare in a commercial zone and just pulling up front and dropping off kids, and, you know, running across the sidewalk. So the area that they have will not impact their bulk parking requirements for the apartments. They're gonna have a segregated area, roped off. The mandate from the state will be how they control that outdoor facility and access in on places like this. I know my grandson goes to a daycare out in Crystal Run, and there's a lot of requirements now about access, limiting access to people off the street, and also play area, outdoor play area. So all of those things will be addressed by the planning board when they go to the planning board. It's not a permitted use, it's a use subject to approval. So the planning board will review their plan and make sure that all of our concerns are addressed within the planning board approval. If they're unable to meet those things, then the planning board will reject the application.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we wouldn't get preempted by the state.
No, 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 no. We're allowed to put in regulations, just like, if you notice, most of the larger daycares, that's why we have a minimum square footage.
Yeah.
The larger daycares come under strict regulation by the state, but I believe the state goes further than us. And they'll pick up the safety issues other than the off-street drop-off.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Motion to close? Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Regalsoom, all in favor?
Aye.
All the hearings closed.
And now we have a second public hearing. It's on the issue of speed control options for Highland Avenue and the surrounding areas. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Whereas in response to concerns from people who reside in the city, and especially on Highland Avenue and surrounding areas, with concerns of speeding on city streets, the mayor and the committee have suggested street calming examples for Highland Avenue, which was presented at the April 19th, 2016 council meeting. And whereas the common council has requested a public hearing to hear any comments on the possible traffic calming solutions presented at the April 19th meeting, and any new possible solutions. Therefore, let it be resolved that the city of Middletown Common Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, at 8:00 PM, in the common council chambers for the purpose of hearing any and all on the issue of speed control options. And this is by the order of the common council. This was in the Times-Held Record on May 25th and May 26th, and also on the city website.
It's time, the public hearings open.
Yes, Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to reintroduce a PowerPoint that was done at one of the earlier meetings, just so everyone in the room and at home can come up to date on what we're talking about in regards, and the genesis of this issue also. Basically, this is not a public hearing only for Highland Avenue. Highland Avenue is the first to approach us, but as you heard tonight from Mr. Escobar and Mrs. Escobar, Way We Yonder is a concern. We haven't looked at Way We Yonder yet, but we have looked at some of the other streets as you'll see I go through, as I go through. But the outcry from Highland Avenue of some residents, not all, and you're gonna hear that tonight too, is that Highland Avenue is unsafe. We had a couple meetings regarding it. The residents came here, they met with us privately, they asked us to look into different options. People made proposals about different options. What I did was I met with the Commissioner of Public Works, and I'm gonna go through the PowerPoint at this point. In February 2002, John Collins Engineers, Traffic and Transportation Specialists, completed the evaluation of traffic conditions on Highland Avenue. They conducted vehicle speed analysis, studied volume of cars, vehicle classification, and proposed traffic calming options. None of the options were adopted with the exception of short-term enforcement. We retained the engineering firm of Clark Patterson Lee to assist the committee, which was made up of myself, DPW Commissioner Jacob Twill, Chief Bethencourt, Council President Rodriguez, and Alderman Joe Massey. Of course, the objectives were to apply physical engineered measures to compel drivers to slow down and decrease traffic volume on side streets. In meeting those goals, we wanted to make sure that we would reduce cut-through traffic, increase the safety of children, pedestrians, bicyclists, and neighborhood residents, maximize bicycle and pedestrian activity, and whatever we did would have to be aesthetically pleasing. Other areas of the city that, so far that we have looked at, and we have more to come, are Monhegan Avenue, West Main Street, Eisenhower Drive, and California Avenue. Those were four of the streets that after our original Highland Avenue presentation, neighbors had called, and we are also looking at others. We looked at the traditional methods of reducing speed. And the first one we looked at was the speed bumps, and that was the obvious benefit for reducing speed. And the negatives are appearance, the jarring effect on vehicles and passengers, liability, and noise. We also examined textured pavement, and it's usually seen as you approach toll booths, and it's a problem for bicyclists, and it's also a major noise problem, especially late at night. We also looked at roundabouts or neighborhood traffic circles. They're effective, however, they can limit emergency vehicle access and would require city acquisition of private property due to the minimum size requirements. We also looked at median barriers, the use for road narrowing, which is a traffic calming option. The issues are no left turn out of a driveway, it results in diverting traffic onto side streets, and in some cases, over time, they become aesthetically unpleasing. We also looked at the Center Island narrowing or intersection, and they're also called bulbouts. That would bring the curb out to a parking lane at the intersections only, and force drivers to turn more sharply, thus more slowly. Would eliminate the ability for aggressive driving, I'm sorry, aggressive drivers to use parking lanes to pass other drivers, and it has been proven in other communities to be an effective traffic calming tool. They would be required at each intersection, and with large gaps in intersections, they're usually complemented with chokers, which are called mid-block curb extensions. One concern that we presented to the council in the previous meeting was the flow of stormwater. We examined the final one, which is raised crosswalks. They're similar to speed bumps, however, they include a flat section on the top and allow four wheels of the vehicle to rest on the raised section at the same time. They are gently sloped ramps and offer smoother transitions than speed bumps. My understanding is that these can be at different levels. They don't have to be at the maximum level, but that would be an engineering thing, depending upon your impact that you wanna have. Do you wanna make it slightly inconvenient for somebody to hit them at a higher speed? Or do you wanna make it really, really inconvenient for them to hit it at a higher speed? Our recommendations, and granted, these are recommendations from my office in response to requests to address speeding not only on Highland Avenue, but citywide. Installation of raised crosswalks, monitor to see if there is any improvements to track traffic conditions. They include traffic narrowing, Phase 2, if that's not successful, to include traffic narrowing at traffic intersections with the bulbouts. Design would require stormwater control with a rain garden design. We recommended at the time that we conduct public hearings, we knew that it would be very controversial, and that's why we're here tonight. We also make sure that if we do any of these options, that the study would consider the impact on side streets, such as Watkins, Commonwealth, Royce, and others, and then the funding commitment, of course, ultimately from the common council. The plan for the future would be, if the council so desires, is to appropriate funding for the Highland Avenue project. It would be a pilot project to be implemented on other main arteries within the city, and evaluate the success of raised crosswalks and expansion to these other streets with speed issues. So that was the presentation, a little bit modified. But the decision, you know, I know, I wanna apologize to the Escobars, that nobody from within the city did get back to you about it. Usually, we pride ourselves on a quick response, and all calls are logged, so we'll be able to find out which inspector that your calls were diverted to and take the appropriate internal action. But one thing I just wanna emphasize with people also is that if you're not getting satisfaction from a city agency or a city department, please contact your Alderman, my office, council president's office, and we will follow up immediately. I kind of like if you're doing it by email, that you would copy me, and then my office staff will monitor your complaint through the process and get back to you. But that being said, speeding is a major issue, not just on Highland Avenue. Monhegan Avenue, we have the same problem, not as bad as on Way We Yonder, but Way We Yonder is a serious area for speeders, and to be honest with you, we haven't got to Way We Yonder yet. But we need to do something. Now, some of the suggestions that have been made is hire more police, and the police will fund the park, the violations will fund the additional police. Well, first of all, we can't hire enough police. Comparisons have been made to Montgomery. You know, when you come from Middletown, there's one road into Montgomery. That's it. In the Middletown, I believe, we have 42 access roads into the city, many of them major, East Main, West Main, some of that I've already mentioned, Sproach Street, Cottage Street. So they're all over the place. So there's not enough police that we can hire. The chief is gonna give some statistics on what we have been doing, but it's my opinion that we need to do something different. If you don't agree, we don't agree, we go on, like 2002. But that's your choice to fund the study of implementing these types of barriers, or if there's a better idea out there, that's also something we should consider. But I've expressed my opposition to stop signs. I don't think they work, I think they create more problems, on Highland at least. But they're, you know, we don't have all the answers, but this was just our response to a group of neighbors who wanted to address the speed issue on Highland Avenue. But it's not looking at Highland Avenue only. If we can make this work on Highland, we can make it work on Monhegan and Oliver. We can make it work on Way We Yonder as you come into the city. We can make it work in other parts of the city. But that choice would be for you folks to fund both the study and the implementation and construction of any traffic calming device. But I can assure you, the chief will make sure that, as much as we can, we do patrol. We don't like issuing speeding tickets, but it is a revenue. We want people to understand that we basically have a zero tolerance on speeding. The police officers have been requested that if you pull someone over for speeding, you give them a ticket for speeding. But it's just too much area for a patrol to cover 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it's not only Highland Avenue, it's all these other streets that are having similar problems. So I'll be available after the hearing, at the end of the hearing, for any questions if they come up. Thank you.
Police chief.
So I agree with a lot of the things that the mayor has gone over. I'm not in support of stop signs. I think I voiced that concern early on. Data has consistently shown that stop signs are not to be used as a speed deterrent. The same persons who see the speed sign are not going to adhere to a stop sign. They're obviously lawbreakers. So we would need police there to stop people from speeding from stop sign to stop sign. Statistically, as you know, we started our enforcement, our increased enforcement up on Highland Avenue towards the end of last year, and I provided you with those statistics to date in January. If you recall, we enlisted the assistance of the New York State Police, who sent in troopers to help us on the detail. Subsequently, that detail has pulled out and went back to other assignments, but a part of their assessment of the area was that there wasn't enough activity for the state police to continually provide assistance and troopers to the area. There just wasn't enough speeding for them to continue sending troopers just to be assigned to Highland Avenue.
Did you, you extended it to other streets, right?
We did, we did. I'll get to that. So in reference to their request for increased activity for the troopers assigned here, we had assigned them to Monhegan Avenue, also to Dulson Avenue, but yet and still, these are troopers who were assigned to the throughway details, that's all they did was write tickets. There wasn't enough activity to keep those troopers here, and then they were assigned to other places. So to date, on Highland Avenue, the city police department has issued 49 tickets for speeding in zone. That's as of today. There have been 16 reported accidents on Highland Avenue, and that's actually down from the 2015 number of 13. So there is some impact. The impetus behind traffic enforcement is supposed to be to decrease accidents and make our roads safer. Sometimes perception, such as the people who live in that area, may not coincide with the actual data that can be gathered through analytical methods and through actual enforcement. So as a reference point, we talked about Monhegan Avenue being one of the other areas in which we felt that speed was a factor. In actuality, Monhegan Avenue, the speed is actually significantly lower than Highland Avenue when it comes to enforcement. It could be because the roadway is so vastly different, it could be because there's different turns in the roadway, it also could be because the roadway is not as wide and has some natural narrowing areas where it comes through the residential streets. I still stand by my position that I don't believe that stop signs would cure the woes or the perception up on Highland Avenue in reference to speed. I'm continuing to monitor the situation there, and I'm continuing to send enforcement there, basically every shift, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as we are able to be there. But as the mayor said, and I agree wholeheartedly, we can't have a police officer on Highland Avenue, or any other street for that matter, within the city, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even if you gave me another five cops, even if you gave me another 10 cops. There are other issues in the city that have to be addressed and enforced through law enforcement. And I'm not minimizing their perception on Highland Avenue, but I do believe that statistics are showing us that, you know, the productivity that is available up there in reference to enforcement doesn't seem to be as great as law enforcement sees it. And, you know, I'll continue to do the best that I can, and I'll continue to monitor, and I'll continue to report back to you with whatever data that we have.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, chief. Jacob?
I got it. I got it.
All right, thanks. Well, basically, I'm just, you know, like the mayor suggested, we had a lot of discussion in here with you, with Alderman Massey, with most of the Aldermen in here, with the mayor, and we're just gonna listen to the public, see what they would like to add to this picture, and we'll be happy to discuss afterwards.
Thank you. Right now, open to the public, I would like to invite one of our best county executives, Mayor McPhillips.
Thank you very much. I wanna say thank you to all of you, first of all, for your service here, to our city, to our mayor, and, well, to all of you for everything you do to try to help us keep our city good. And I know it's not easy. I am here tonight, the last time I was here before a council was when we were trying to get permission to put a funeral home on Highland Avenue. We had a lot of opposition. We had three public hearings, right, Jerry? Anyway, I am here tonight because I know that there's a lot of concern from some neighbors at Highland Avenue about the speeding. And, you know, because I run a business, Applebee McPhillips Funeral Home, many of you know that we have occasion to go out with processions very often. We are next door to the Highland Manor Nursing Home, that many times has emergency vehicles going in, there are ambulances, sometimes even police departments if the air conditioning isn't working. And, you know, we also have the Y there, we have the Elks Club, we have the Temple. There's just so many public spaces that people use, and so consequently, there's a lot of traffic on our street. It happens to be the, I think, prettiest street in Middletown, the widest street. We have all the parades, and it's, those are the kind of things that I love about Highland Avenue, and those are the things that I would like to keep. And I would like to keep the street the way it is now. And in understanding the concerns that some of the neighbors have about speeders, I can just say that the chief knows that, I know that telephone number for the police by heart. Every once in a while, we will have somebody, and you have to guess, they're going about 70 miles an hour, and I get on the phone right away and call. But beyond that, I think there's gotta be a way that we let people know that Highland Avenue is a street that we're gonna be watching you if you're driving down. And I'd rather not have any of the speed bumps or all the different things that you've studied, and some of them I wasn't even aware of. And I just don't think that they would work. There are some vehicles that come into that nursing home that are 18-wheelers, that are bringing, you know, goods into the funeral home. So I think there's some, like, difficulties with some of the options that have been presented. But I wonder if, and I'm glad the mayor spoke about Montgomery, because I was thinking, you know, Montgomery are tuxedo, if you're driving around those places, you know right away to slow down, because there is a police car right there. But I was thinking, if we could have a sign that says, you know, you're in the city of Middletown, and on Highland Avenue, speeders have a minimum fine of, I said like 250, and Sue said 500. We were checking with our new full-time attorney back there, and he was saying we could have a minimum. But if you had something that said to people as they're entering Highland Avenue and other streets, and the Escobars, I'm happy that they're here, because I know it's not the only street that has speeders. So if you had something that said, minimum fines are $250 for speeders, and you put that sign at the various streets where you've got problems, my personal feeling is, that would slow me down if I had to come down to a 30 mile an hour speed limit. And it's just another way of saying, can we just have a little bit of time? Can we see if something like this would work before we start adding to our expenses? Because I don't know how much those bumps are gonna cost you. I worry more about infrastructure in the city of Middletown, only because I live in an old place, and I always worry about all the pipes that go out to the street, and the pipes in the street, too. I think there's so many things that we have to be concerned about, that this is one, if we could do it without spending a whole lot of money, it might be a good resolution. So again, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Brian Dearing. I live at 226 Monhegan. Regarding the speed bumps, I think Mary made some very good points, and most of them were things that I already had, but plowing is one. It turns plowing that road into a nightmare to put speed bumps on it. Also, with the big trucks and the larger vehicles, when they come down off of that, they always have more impact and create ruts in blacktop. We see that right down by the old Wall Radio Castle, where all that traffic squishes that pavement up, and it always has to be cut down. The damage to vehicles, or reported damage to vehicles, because they have these vehicles that are very low, and even if you get four tires on this thing, it's still gonna be up, down, there's gonna be some kind of problem there. I have Jeep Wrangler, I don't care. And the increased traffic on adjacent streets, people are gonna avoid this. And that's gonna put these small communities and places where there's not as much road frontage to houses, children in danger. Because now, instead of speeding on a big street, they're gonna come speed on a small street, and there's a lot less place to see kids around them. As far as Monhegan goes, I've had the box down there, 70 miles an hour, consistently, all the time. I've got quads, I've got unlicensed vehicles all the time on that road. That's, bring the box down and monitor it. You can park out in my driveway, we'll sit out front in chairs, and we'll watch. I dare you, there'll be cars going by so far, so fast you can't tell what color they Enforce the speed limits, really. We talk about Montgomery every single time. Why do we do that? For 35 years plus that I've been driving, I've known, you don't speed in Montgomery, and there's more than one access, there's 211 and 17K, by the way, which are major roads. So as far as speeding goes, they have a reputation. You do not speed in these places, because you're gonna get tagged. Are they always there? No. But they're there often enough that you know. And once one person tells two people, tell two more people, tell two more people, this is something that goes on all these roads, not just Highland Avenue, not just Monhegan, not just Way We Yonder. It's happening all through the city. I've been passed by soccer moms in their vans, doing 30 miles an hour on Monhegan, on a double yellow line, up a hill, we couldn't see traffic coming. I've been passed. Are you kidding me? Really? So obviously, everybody thinks that they can just go ahead and do that. So I don't think taxpayers should be paying for these speed bumps. So, I don't think taxpayers should be paying for these speed bumps. And as far as a study from 2002, that's 14 years ago, folks. What kind of computer were you using 14 years ago? Just asking. Things change. You know, this isn't an issue of the tail wagging the dog. The dog's wagging the tail. If I wanted to know who is the dog and who's the tail? Thank you.
Just a quick FYI. I'm a Escobar. Okay, if you give tickets out, and Mary said $250, ah, it could be $500. You know what the worst thing is? If you give a guy with a CDL points, he's gonna, he is going to smarten up. And that's the biggest thing, is the points, not the money. So you could say $1,000, but that license means more to him than the fine. So, if you do that, believe me, and of course, take care of ruts, because they are getting worse. And one of these days, I'm gonna have, I did, there was a bag of topsoil in my neighbor's yard, and then, one of these days, I'm gonna find an axle in my yard. But they're not that big right now, but they're annoying, okay? Quality of life, remember that. Quality of life. Every time they go by, at 5:30 in the morning, it's my alarm. And I'm retired. You know, I don't have to get up at 5:30, but I do, because they come by, boom, 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 and empty, and then they come back full, and again, one of these days, an axle is gonna be on my front yard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Glickman. I live at 147 Highland Avenue. I was here for the April 19th, I think it was, meeting as well, and I was a little hesitant to get up to say what I'm about to say now, because I concur with Mary, that most of the proposed improvements on Highland Avenue, I think, are more inconvenient than the heavy traffic and speeding. I've been speaking to some of the neighbors, and most of them would rather not have most of those things done. I think that we'd rather have the heavy traffic volume and an occasional speeder, than have speed bumps, stop signs, the bulbous corners, and so on and so forth. Most of us feel that it's really not that terrible. I've been there for 36 years at my address, and there's been quite an increase in the volume of traffic, perhaps a slight increase in the frequency of speeders, but it's not that terrible, frankly. I'm not that inconvenienced by it. I have to wait longer to back out of my driveway, but if I'm careful, I don't get hit. And if I am gonna get hit, it really doesn't make a hell of a lot of difference if the car's going 35 or 45. I try not to get hit. And I must say that the neighbors who've, were at the April 19th meeting, and were making a huge case, oops, were making a big case, were neighbors from two houses. And they were, you know, I guess, kind of eloquent in making their case, but most of the other neighbors I've spoken with really are not of the same mind. And I spoke to someone I know who was on Wayley Anda, apropos of what was said by a previous speaker up here, and she was really upset. So I agree that the problem is not confined to Highland Avenue, maybe it's worse elsewhere. I gave that person one of our slow down signs, maybe you've seen it, posted on Wayley Anda now. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Tim Boyle from 158 Highland Avenue. First thing I want to do is thank you for your time in addressing this issue. I was one of the two neighbors, I believe, that was very vocal about the speeding issue, and came forward and raised the point. One of the things I really wanted to say, it was about the accidents. The accidents that I have seen on the street, at least two of them this year and two last year, were serious accidents, based on the vehicle damage, what the vehicle did. One of them flipped over. So those vehicles in serious accidents is one thing. The secondary thing about it is, the vehicles were going forward, they were going in one direction. The reason they had those accidents is because the street is so wide. And that's the only thing we're asking for, was to narrow the street down. And we actually see that, because today, I think it was over the weekend, the funeral home painted, no, not the funeral home, the nursing home, painted parking lines on the street. I don't know if that was a city thing, or if that was something that they did on their own, but that was one of the first things that we asked for, was to narrow the street down. Narrowing the street gives the perception that I can't go as fast. The other thing we asked for was some of the calming measures, like the divider, or the raised intersections, which I do agree, the raised intersections, or the raised crosswalks, would actually be a good thing to slow the vehicles down. Working in an ambulance for probably 20 years, and on a fire truck for five, it really doesn't do anything to the vehicle when it goes over it. We've gone over them at decent speeds with somebody in spinal mobilization in the back of an ambulance, and they have no deficit. It doesn't do anything to the vehicle, it doesn't do anything to the street. The street actually gets reinforced underneath it. So ruts from overweight vehicles doesn't occur. So those are the things that we were asking for. Some of the other things, I was just kinda going down the street, some of the side streets, like J Street, Chappelle Parkway, Linden Place, and Church Street, don't have any stop signs at them, they're just open intersections. So if we can get that addressed, maybe a stop sign, or a stop line. And possibly, like, with the bump outs, maybe we can do something with a temporary bump out. Paint the roadway a different color, put some plastic stanchions up. It may not look good, but it's kinda like a buy it before we try it option, you know, to see what it does. It's a minimal investment, maybe the DPW can do it on their own, because it's bolted down with, like, the plastic stanchions that are reflective, and the rubber curbing, and we could see how it does. But I definitely support the raised crosswalks. I think it would actually improve the problem that we have. And I know the police department can't be there 24/7, I realize that. And even signs, we've had the speed sign out there, and all that does is tell us how fast they're going. You know, they're going 45, they're going 55. Warning signs, it's not gonna do anything. You know, people are gonna see it, and they're gonna still do what they're doing today, because it's the same thing as a speed limit sign. The one thing that does help, when the funeral home has a wake, and there's cars lining the streets, everybody goes slow. Everybody proceeds down the street with caution, because they're worried that they're gonna hit someone, you know, and that's the effect that we're looking for, just without the cars. And the other thing with that is, when the streets slow down because of that, none of the cars are going off the street. They're not going back to the other side streets to get around, they're just going down Highland Avenue at the same speed. So the overflow, or the fear that another street's gonna get overflow, probably won't even happen. So, that's my two cents on it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susan Few, 57 Prospect Street. This is the first time I'll get up and speak without talking about cleaning up litter. As a neighbor of Highland Avenue, I'm concerned about the possibility of putting something on the end of Prospect Street, coming out with the amount of traffic that comes up the street that I live on, that enters into Highland Avenue. I cannot possibly imagine what it would be like for 50 or 80 cars leaving at the same time out of the Elks Club, coming into a raised ramp. I just cannot imagine that that would be a very safe area. Prospect Street is not wide enough to accommodate the traffic that could come out of there, and then have to deal with a ramp at the end of it. I'm just asking a question, maybe the police chief, or Commissioner Toewill might be able to help me with this, but how about videotaping for, like, one day, the traffic? I know when I go on the street, any street where there's a recording of how fast I'm going, I get really antsy. I mean, I am not a speeder, but I go slower. And I think that kind of thing, you know, maybe on Friday and Sunday, might be a good time to try it, even if it's only there for a short period of time, but I think, I do not wanna see a big expansion of things put on the road. I think there's another way to do it. I don't know that I have the answer, but I maybe have an option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michael Deefenbach, 151 Highland. I also want to thank you folks for all the time that you've spent on this, and hopefully it will lead to something productive. I'm a little bit concerned that, that I hear people today saying, this isn't a big problem. I thought, I thought our starting point was that this was a problem. If we need to go back and measure the traffic, I mean, with all respect to the police, I don't think the number of tickets that are given is an indicator of whether the problem is bad. I mean, you measure it with those, somebody was talking about those wires before. I mean, if we need to go back and get statistics, I'm confident that it's gonna show that this is, this is a big problem. And it's discouraging, after all this discussion, after all this work, that we're questioning whether this is, whether this is a big deal or not. My wife presented to the council before, and virtually ignored my PowerPoint presentation, I'm still dealing with that. But, but we put together the presentation, and the thing, the thing that sticks with me about Highland Avenue, is that it is the longest approach to downtown Middletown, without, without a stop sign or a stoplight. It's a three-quarter mile stretch. And people have talked about the fact that it's wide, the fact that it's four lanes wide encourages people to speed, but it's also a flat, straight, three-quarter mile stretch. There is not, they're close to that long, an uninterrupted stretch approaching Middletown. There isn't. So it's, so it's a real problem, and I hope we really aren't seriously questioning that speeding on Highland is a problem, because it is, you know? And the, we wanted stop signs, stop, everybody's concerned about, we've heard people express concern about the cost of these things. Stop signs are fine with us, right? They're cheap. We'd pay for one within, you know, 100 yards of our house, but a lot of people seem to object to that. That's okay, I don't quite understand that. I've never seen anybody run through a stop sign at 40 miles an hour, never seen it. And it might happen, but the majority, the majority of people are gonna slow down. But I'm not arguing for stop signs. I'm saying that the, all the analysis to date has yielded these remedies that are proposed that are fairly mild, right? They're not gonna, they're not gonna cause noise, they're not gonna destroy, destroy the road. They're pretty mild abatement measures, and they'll even, they'll even beautify the road, too. So I'm having trouble understanding why people are taking, taking issue with it. If anything, it's gonna make Highland Avenue more attractive, it is gonna slow people down without severely hampering them. And, and that's our objective, to get people to slow down a little, right? So, so I really hope that we can move forward with, with this first proposal for the, for the raised, for the raised crosswalks. And people will be warned about it, that it's not gonna, it's not gonna take anybody by surprise. I mean, I think it's something that we should, that we really should try. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi. Bob Dietrich from 14 Chestnut Street. I think that, that's some of the things that, you know, brought as far as traffic calming are good ones. You know, I'm a big proponent of complete streets. I think that if we adopt a resolution, have complete streets, resolution throughout the city, it might be helpful, it could also get us some grants. One of the things, as I was listening to what everyone was saying, in terms of, you know, some people don't want more, you know, abutments that might slow, or change what Highland Avenue looks like. I'm thinking, in the time that I've been here, except where some of the businesses are, there isn't that much parking, or cars parked on Highland Avenue. Perhaps if we, we look at having, at least on one side, a bike lane that's on the interior, and if you're going to park, you would park outside the bike lane. So again, what that might do is, without putting anything else in, that may narrow the street. So you could, and plus, then we would have a bike lane for people who travel from point A to point B. You know, again, there are a lot of things that we can do. I think that some of the ones that were suggested are very good and workable, as long as it doesn't hurt the plowing. You know, I'm not sure about those bumps, whether they do, it seems a little more gentle than the other ones, so, that's it.
Thank you.
My name's Shane Hatcher, 158 Highland Avenue. I appreciate all of your time, I've spoken to many of you, and I do greatly appreciate everyone's consideration of this. You know, I take great pride moving here. I came from a condo in Jersey City, moved here, I take great pride in my home, especially my front yard, flowers are pretty important to me, I like gardening, and anything that beautifies the city and makes Middletown a better place, sounds great to me. And essentially, from starting this, to begin with, I've always been concerned with the speed on our street, and everywhere, but I live on Highland Avenue, I haven't tried to discount any other street in the city, it's just my main concern, and where I spend most of my time is Highland Avenue. And I did create, make the signs and pass them around to my residents in the area that I live, but I want to improve our town. And these measures of the raised crosswalks, they're not speed bumps, they don't cause ruts, they're reinforced with concrete, and they can be quite attractive. And I really would be grateful if you could consider supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the county, from the public? Okay, all the record soon.
I received a letter, I'll give it to Karen when I'm done, is that, via email from a resident on California Avenue, Catherine Lucas. I'll read it as it was given to me. While I can respect the concerns of the Highland Avenue residents in regard to the speeding issue, I cannot in good conscience support our tax dollars being spent in such a way that will only benefit a handful of individuals in the city of Middletown. As a resident of California Avenue, a street that is just as straight, but substantially more narrow than Highland Avenue, speeding is a huge concern for my family, even with stop signs. My front porch is a mere 12 feet from the street. Daily motorists blow through the stop sign located three houses down and speed past at 50 to 60-plus miles per hour. As a mother of two children, I am legitimately scared to have my children outside in the front yard, for fear that one of those irresponsible motorists is going to lose control of their car, and end up causing a catastrophic accident. I have even been concerned, sitting in my living room, that one of the cars could potentially end up in there with me, at the speed in which they are traveling. If the city is looking to spend tax dollars to curb the speeding problem, I urge them to look into a solution to benefit the city as a whole, hiring, such as the hiring of additional police officers, or increasing police presence in areas of concern. At least with either of those solutions, the city has the potential of collecting revenue with citations. We need a solution that will benefit the city as a whole, and not just one street. No one residential area is more important, nor do they deserve preferential treatment because of their perceived property values and socioeconomic status, especially if this preferential treatment is going to come at the cost of all our tax dollars. This proposed solution on Highland Avenue is in no way going to stop the speeding problem on my street, and I have a real problem with my tax dollars paying for that. Thank you. Catherine Lucas, third ward.
Thank you.
Need to wrap up and clarify some, you know, points. I'm kinda surprised that some of the very people who are arguing, like this lady on California Avenue, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's me, maybe it's not making sense to me, but these are tools that are gonna be applied, it's not Highland Avenue against the city, or we're doing everything for Highland Avenue. I think the one, it was very clear that they came in with a problem, you folks wanted us to look at it, we looked at it, we're coming up with recommendations for a pilot project. But if there's a problem, I recall a few years ago, when Highland, California Avenue was having a problem, and we installed stop signs at the intersection, at your guys' request. Well, and as you said, it's not working. So, also, all right, so there's two entrances into Montgomery.
It's gonna even be worse.
There's two entries into Montgomery. But that's not the point. It's not, you know, the chief has made it clear, everyone's making it clear, that enforcement alone, in a city of 28,000 Well, and as you said, it's not working. So, um, also, all right, so there's two entrances into Montgomery.
It's going to even be worse.
There's two entries into Montgomery. But that's not the point. It's not, you know, the chief has made it clear, everyone's making it clear, that enforcement alone in a city of twenty-eight thousand people plus is not going to do it. We're open for other ideas, not just don't invest money on Highland Avenue. I think that's a, somehow this, this discussion has turned into something that I'm like shocked about. We're not proposing speed bumps. We're not proposing everything that was in the PowerPoint. I was showing people what we were looking at, not saying we're doing all of these things. The proposal was to start with raised crosswalks. Bike lanes is an option. Bob is right with complete streets and I thought that was in the presentation, but that was one option that we wanted to discuss with Highland Avenue. But traffic calming is, is narrowing, is narrowing the street. If we're not interested in doing something, and we're not relying on a fourteen-year-old study to come up with the data that we've produced to you, that's, that's totally inaccurate. What we produced was a study that was done in 2002 because there was a similar problem and I believe the traffic count at that time was nine hundred cars an hour. I think Mr. Glickman even acknowledged that he believes that traffic has increased since then, you know? But if, if there's no serious desire to do anything on Highland Avenue other than stop signs, then that choice is up to you to put stop signs up or not putting up. That's not up to me. I, I gave you my reasons for opposing them and I won't oppose the installation of the stop signs. I think it's a horrible idea. I think it creates more problems for some of the concerns that people raised here such as emergency response time, whereas, you know, emergency vehicles aren't allowed to go through stop signs either. They're, they have to slow down at, at the stop signs in the intersections. The crosswalks are, plowing is not an issue. This is not like technology that Middletown, New York has just come up with. This is technology that's used all over the country in cold weather, warm weather and, and has had great success. So I'm not advocating for any position. I'm just trying to present to you folks options, but it seemed like it turned into is you shouldn't do this for Highland Avenue because as the letter stated, basically those are rich people up there and what about us people? That's craziness. This is, this is a proposed pilot project. Every street, every access street into the city is complaining about enforcement. The chief said, "You can give him ten more cops." And, and one person said to me, "Well, the tickets they give out will fund the police." Okay, what happens then when the effectiveness of the police officers stops the traffic calming, or stops the speeding? Who then funds the police? There's no more revenue stream from, from tickets coming in. This is a big picture, guys. This is not like little, little stuff. It's, it's a great local issue debate. I appreciate all the public input, but I just wish it hasn't become a Highland Avenue against the world issue because almost every speaker off of Highland Avenue that came up here or has written or has communicated to me has said, "We have the same problem, guys. Why aren't you doing anything for us?" Well, we are. This is the, this is the beginning. Why are we doing it there first? Because it's a three-quarter mile run. They came here. It's a Y street. Bob Dietrich is correct about complete streets. We haven't adopted the program, but we have adopted portions of the complete streets with our pedestrian control that's going to go throughout the city, pedestrian crosswalks, pedestrian lighting. We're just trying to make the city more bikable, more walkable and more pedestrian friendly. But it's, it's not a, a dive, where we made sure, I think in my PowerPoint, I made sure that anything we do, we have to give assurance that it's not going to be such a imposition that the traffic is going to go off onto Commonwealth, Royce or, or Jay or Watkins or any of those streets. So I hope when you examine the, the options and that you don't waste our time or city taxpayers' money if there's not a desire to do something other than stop signs. Because if there's not, there's no sense in appropriating money to fund the engineers to look at this type of technology or options for other streets and then start getting some input on options that we can put in throughout the city. Because what you have in front of you are basically the options of what almost every community in the country are doing. If status quo is fine on California Avenue, Monthagen Avenue, Eisenhower, Eisenhower Drive, Highland Avenue, all of these streets, Cottage Street, if that's fine, then I say do nothing if it's acceptable. If you're interested in a solution, then we need to address the tools that are available for us, but please don't waste our time or, or taxpayers' money in just funding another study to know that we do have a problem. Some people don't think it's a serious problem, some do, some don't, but I, I think the, the voices of opposition all acknowledge, at least on their streets, there is a problem. So if Highland Avenue is not the answer, is this what you want to do? What do you want to do besides placing police officers with some phony type of projection that the revenue created is going to pay for the police officers? It costs the city of Middletown for a first-year police officer about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in that area. That's just the first year. After that, you know, it multiplies every year with increases and contractual increases. So don't think that we're going to solve this alone by enforcement. I'm all for the signage. I don't know if it's permissible to issue a ticket to a car for speeding based on a video. Not sure that it can be done, but if it's something that can be done, I don't know how you issue a speeding ticket to a car, but you, I know you have to issue it to a driver. That's my understanding. But we'll look into that and that was a suggestion and, and a good suggestion. Additional signage, suggestion on some of the streets, but remember, we, we put up child, children at play signs all over the place and we know we do it and to appease the people in neighborhood, but we also see speeding on those streets. So, but if, if we're going to get serious about it, appropriate some money, we'll look at doing it, at least trying it. But, but don't leave the room or the discussion with the impression that we're putting up medians, we're putting up, we're doing traffic narrowing, we're doing all of these things. The request in front of you now is if you want to look at raised crosswalks and raised crosswalks only on portions of Highland, and then, then I urge you to do the money. If not, you know, they, everybody gave it their best try and we'll have the status quo for another fourteen years. Thank you.
Alderman Massey. One of the things we don't want for sure, and I think the mayor brought it up and, and that letter kind of brought it out, we don't want one part of the community against another part of the community. The reason Highland Avenue was the focus, because there were several residents at Highland Avenue who contacted me and I brought it to this council. I brought it to the mayor to look at it. If it was Cottage Street, someone from Cottage Street, we would have looked at Cottage Street. If it was Monthagen Avenue, we would have looked, if it was California Avenue, we would have looked at it. So it, it's not, it's a, as the mayor said, it's a pilot program. If it's successful on Highland Avenue, we will look at other areas. But we don't want to segregate. We don't want that to get started. I happen to agree with the mayor when, when I was told about the one option, put more police and as they write tickets, we'll fund it that way, obviously. That, that's a ridiculous argument because if you put more police there and they do their job, you're not going to have any more speeders. There's no more income. I, and I'm going to tell you, I was just out in California and the street that my nephew happens to live on in Dana Point is not quite as wide as Highland Avenue, but it, it's significantly wider than most of our streets. They have the, that what you call the raised crosswalk. I found a couple of things and I watched it because I knew this issue was coming up. It does work. I spoke to many of the neighbors. None of them complained about it. There was an engineering decision, I guess, because when I came back, I spoke to the mayor and I spoke to the council president and to the Commissioner of Public Works and I, and I noted that they were not uniform in distance apart from each other. One was maybe ninety yards before you hit a, hit the second one and then it was maybe seventy yards. I guess there's a reason for doing it, but it did work. And I, and what I did is I went to a number of the other streets and it seemed to work. There was no complaints. I went to City Hall, they asked if there were any complaints. Now, obviously, they do not plow snow out in Dana Point, California, but I've been assured that the, the raised will not affect it. It's not a speed bump, it's a calming effect. I'm hoping that we can do something and once we do, if we do, it will be the beginning to see, does it work? And if it doesn't work, well, then we may have to look at something else. But if the truth is that Highland Avenue residents don't want anything done and no one, none of the other residents want, they don't want anything done, then we should end it here. But I truly believe that hearing from all the other people that came from different streets, that they believe they have a problem the same as, if not worse than Highland Avenue. So I don't see the problem in trying one of these and, and I think the raised one seems to be the best option and I think it's the least expensive option other than stop signs. And I happen to be one of the guys that initially thought stop signs was a good idea and I've been beat down by that. So I will take that, I guess stop signs will not alleviate the problem. But people came to us because they feel that there's a problem and there are other communities within the city of Middletown that feel they have a problem too. I would like to see us try something. I'm hoping that it works. The worst that happens is that it doesn't work and maybe we look at another one, but to do nothing, I don't think is, is a good option, but I'm only, you know, one of nine votes here. Thank you. Okay. Alderman Kline.
Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any numbers or figures on what a raised crosswalk costs? Because we keep talking about the cost, but we have no real conception of what it is we're talking about.
No, we, we don't have any at this time. Just the stamped blacktop that we did in here for the crosswalks as an example, they're about thirty-five hundred dollars each.
That's the one we did on North Street?
Yeah. Stamped asphalt, which is nothing, not concrete or anything, but we can come up with numbers. We don't have numbers yet.
Yes, I'd like to have some idea what we're talking about. You know, I, I like crosswalk, I like clearly marked crosswalks for the sake of pedestrians, being able to have a spot that they feel like they can safely cross the street. So it's not just an issue of the speeding. If, if we could do it and as the mayor says, it doesn't, we can adjust how far it's raised. I mean, it doesn't have to be raised very much, I think, to have a calming effect. So it's, it's something I certainly would be willing to consider. The other question I have is what are the fines for speeding? We, in New York, we, we've mentioned maybe if the fines were higher, people wouldn't speed or more points on the license. Is that regulated by the state or is that regulated by the city, what a speeding fine is? Corporation Council, do you know that?
Sure. If they, if the police charge someone with speeding under the state vehicle and traffic law, if it's a three-point speed, the maximum fine's a hundred and fifty dollars with a surcharge here in the city would be, I think it's eighty-five dollars. Four-point speed can go up to, I believe, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or a little bit more and the, the charge increases accordingly based on the number of points under the state vehicle and traffic law. If, if they're writing under our city vehicle and traffic ordinance, then the, the fines would be what are set in the city code.
Okay. So, so we could increase the
There's some
fines in the city if we thought that. And does it increase in the city fines? And I don't remember. I used to know for a second offense or a third offense
It can. And, and certainly, I know even on the state level, if someone gets the same offense like what they call failure to obey a traffic control device is one or a second speed, certainly judges have leeway to increase the fines for those. Sure. More offenses, the more the, the fine can be.
Okay. And, and I know, you know, points on a license, important, but you know, when you hear someone's pulled over and their license has been suspended thirty-five times or something and they're driving anyway, that's not always going to stop people, but.
Well, there are some who will not stop regardless, but if someone is pulled over and knows that they could get what's called an aggravated unlicensed operation, a misdemeanor for suspended license, most people tend to pay attention to that. There's a few that won't.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And along that same line, we also heard, and I think it was the town at Greenberg where they had the signs that were the electronic signs and they said, you know, seventy-two traffic tickets issued so far this month and that those, from their report, and I can call the mayor and see what he says in Greenberg, but those did seem to help and be effective because it said, "You will be next" and, you know, a little more serious enforcement. Thank you.
Alderman Massey.
Thank you. Considering I received a letter, I've seen some faces from the Third Ward tonight and the Escobars who are, you're way, way on to, you said fourth, but I don't know. You're right, you're right past us, I guess. But Wayway Anda does reside, you know, in the Third as well, which is also another, you don't, you want, you sure?
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
It's our, the Fourth Ward where we live is very unique. We don't have sidewalks.
Yep.
It's a road. And they come into Middletown at fifty-five miles an hour and of course, the sign is thirty and by the time they get to the light, which is on County Route Seventy-Eight, they already, okay, now they're doing thirty. But in between there, they're, they're moving, believe me. And not only that way, going out towards Slate Hill. So it's a unique situation and I know you guys will look at it, okay? And maybe make a recommendation, okay? But we have no sidewalks.
Yeah. Yeah. And the same thing on the other side of County Route Seventy-Eight, there's no sidewalk. Similar situation, they speed on down to the post office. But I just, you know, this Highland Avenue is not my area. It's not in my ward, but speeding is something that we do deal with citywide and I understand, I know that the, the people who came to the mayor and with the situation were from Highland Avenue. However, in Neighborhood Watch, it is a monthly conversation from people everywhere. So it's not that no one else is talking about it, it's that they're just talking about it in a different forum. And that, you know, the police have been responsive to that and they've, you know, and there has been, there've been results where they've reported it, the police make adjustments and they, and they see results. And I, I'm just trying to respond to the feedback that I've gotten. You know, Mary made a very good point about cost and infrastructure. Mr. Dietrich mentioned this is a mild solution, but it's potentially a very expensive one. And at a time where we're trying to be very careful with how we spend money, and I understand that this is a capital improvement, but when it comes to things that are capital, you know, we have plows and salt trucks that are looking like Swiss cheese that if we spent the capital in repairing or replacing those, present a greater impact to public safety than these raised crosswalks. The gentleman who came up and spoke about the painted parking spaces and how that seemed to at least give the impression to many drivers that, hey, this is a legitimate parking spot, this is where the world really lies, seems like a more reasonable first step into this rather than engineering and building out on a very long stretch of road, these raised crosswalks, which it seems like from the feedback from many on Highland is not something that neighbors are interested in, that if we can find solutions that are simple to start, that maybe that's the way to go. Speaking to, you know, the, around the city factor, people have seen the presentation and it's not, the feedback that I have heard is not, hey, where's mine? It's, I don't want one either. I want a better answer than I'm going to be rolling up and down my street across these bumps, no matter how mild they are. That's really the conversation. It's not Highland's getting one and I'm not. It's, we're spending a lot of money on Highland, I don't have a solution and that's not the solution I want on my street. So I think in terms of the greater conversation and where we spend our money, if that's the feedback I'm getting from the people feedback I'm getting from the people who I have to respond to, then how can I support funding something that they don't see as a solution to their problem? It's, this is just me responding to the feedback that I have gotten. It's just the best I can do, and, you know, personally, can I drive over them? Sure. I've got a truck, and I've got kids who would think it was awesome to roll up and down Highland as we drive to school every day. But, you know, it's, this is a, this is, I think this is a greater issue. You know, I found, what was interesting that the chief mentioned tonight, and I don't know if everyone really heard it, and it really caught my ear, is that he mentioned that when the state troopers came out to assist on Highland Avenue, they didn't have enough activity to stick around. Their response to us was, there's not enough going on there for us to stay here and monitor this road. And I, I just find that interesting and something that, before we go heading, jumping into this, that maybe we need to take a closer look at. You mentioned 16 accidents, chief, but do we know how many of them were speed-related or weather-related? Is that just an overall number?
That's an overall number. You require in-depth statistics on the accidents themselves, and...
Because I think that's more...
As there's one, one Highland Avenue resident mentioned, there was a severe motor vehicle accident there.
Yep.
But I can provide that.
Okay. I just, I was just curious, because it was a number you brought tonight, so I appreciate that. Jerry and I have spoken in Neighborhood Watch meetings regarding this sign with the, you know, do you want to be number 247 this month, or whatever the statistic might be, is an interesting proposition. If, my understanding is it's electronic, so it will call more attention than just being another children-at-play sign. It's going to catch your eye. What's that? And if you're looking at, we've given out a ton of tickets, and you might be next, it, it can be effective, and I think it can be effective in a way that can make everyone happy at, and a little bit happier to our, our budget as well. Just my thoughts, my reactions. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I take a little exception to the term "jumping in," because I don't think anyone's jumping into anything. I think the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public, and to, we do our due diligence on our side, and we present options. Also, the use of the terms "ramping" and where your kids are going to go over it. This is not a roller coaster. I think there's a misunderstanding exactly what these things are. These are, this is a gradual up and a gradual down, and Jerry, I thought, made it very clear, that the height of those things can be controlled depending upon the effect. So, I don't want to leave that impression. Another thing, on the state police criteria, Highland Avenue didn't meet the state police criteria for their force, their speed task force. Way We Yanda didn't meet the criteria for their speed task force. That doesn't mean that the problems don't exist on Way We Yanda, Monhegan, and Highland Avenue. What it means is that the state police unit that specializes in the speeding enforcement, we don't have enough tickets issued, which, again, goes to the rationale of funding police officers through tickets. So, you, you can't compare the two. The, the reasons for state, you can't justify the reasons for the state police pulling out as not addressing speeding in the city. But we made our presentation. We gave you options. We're looking for feedback from you folks, or from the neighbors, on what they would like to see done in their neighborhood. When, when you start painting streets, parking things on a road, you're going to get opposition from those folks, too. You're going to, when you do a bike lane, you're going to get opposition there, too. So, we need to focus our attention. We, we heard from both sides tonight. I welcome all the input, as I said, and, and, but we, we need to start hearing from you guys as a body, is how would you like us to approach the speeding issue? You heard very clearly that it's citywide, and now you folks need to do a few things. If you think adding police officers is going to do the trick, then I recommend that you start funding additional police officers for that purpose. If you think that a capital expenditure is a lot of money, wait till you start funding 10 police officers and see what kind of money that is. But, the point is, is that I feel like I'm in a national political debate, where I'm just going to make, asking for the solutions. What are the solutions, guys? Give us the solutions. We'll look at whatever you propose, whatever you propose. We'll look at it. Jerry, the reason why we don't have cost estimates is because you need to fund that. You know, we don't, we, we don't, you know, we're not contractors. We need to fund how much it would cost to install these according to our needs, with the road, what kind of base you want. We're not talking about something like when you go to Sam's Club or in front of Kohl's, where you have a high, very high-raised ramp. That's more like a, like a ramp. But with Sue's issue coming in from Prospect, we're not talking about putting it on Prospect. We're talking about one of the crosswalks on Highland. It doesn't deter, you know, it, it doesn't create the problems, and some, and I understand the concerns, but some of the solutions that you're thinking about are worse and cost more than what we're talking about. And are you going to put an electronic sign on every street in the city? Or every, you know, how much do the electronic signs cost? I mean, they're tons of money, operational. Whose house are you going to put it in front of? Those are all questions that, that are going to have to come up and have to be addressed. But we were trying to come up with a less invasive option. If you don't want it, don't fund it. But your turn. Come up with a solution, and we'll be more than happy to look at it.
Thank you, Mayor. Alden Johnson.
Thank you. Well, I think, I personally, sorry to have to follow the mayor's edict to put up or quiet, shall we say. My jury, well, I cleaned it up for publication. My jury is still out. I think as this conversation began, most of us, you know, Highland Avenue was the focal point. It was the focal point of a conversation at a council meeting that was broadcast on television. It was a focal point of a newspaper article, as of in the first 10 pages of the newspaper, so people read it. So, it was certainly reasonable. Ironically, three of the other streets that are focused in this particular study tonight are in the third ward. But it was certainly reasonable for people to say, well, on West Main Street, we have a resident on West Main Street who has access to a radar gun. He said, "Doc, I can clock people doing 67 miles an hour going right up West Main Street on a regular basis. What are you going to do about that?" Highland Pilgrim Estates, I drive up and down Monhegan, Brian left, he got frustrated. But, yeah, try to do 30 miles an hour every single minute on Monhegan, and somebody will be in your bumper unless you look at them in the rear of your mirror and say, "Are you serious? It's 30 miles an hour." As a policymaker, I think I'm as aware as any of us are of the law of unintended consequences. You see a problem, you make a solution, and then 10 minutes later, somebody says, "Well, what about these three other situations that you just impacted through your solution? Did you think about that policymaker?" And I think we're all guilty, many times have not. So, looking at the options, and certainly, I, I don't feel shy in saying that this was not being addressed as a citywide problem until this evening, but the fact that we all got calls about our street says that it is. So, if I look at the options at hand, I'm trying to answer your question. There seems to be two basic concepts. You can make an obstacle to speed, like an elevator crosswalk, or a speed bump, or a cobble street that makes a noise and riles your car, or you have the narrowing idea that people's perception is, I can't go fast because there's enough room for me to make a quick decision if I have to. So, it seems to me those are the two ways that we're going. Obviously, as a policymaker, it's tough to move forward if we have no cost, and as the mayor pointed out, if you don't put up some money to find out the cost, you can't find out what the cost is. I get that. Certainly, in the context of this presentation, I think the elevator crosswalk is the least environmentally disruptive, and my knee-jerk response is it may be the most cost-effective, but I have no idea if that's a true statement. And when we talk about citywide issues, there's nothing that says to me that putting an elevator crosswalk on Highland is going to solve Monhegan, or California, or West Main Street. So, when you put all your eggs in that basket and say it's a pilot for the city, I'm not sure that I'm standing on solid ground as an individual when I make that statement. So, I think something needs to be addressed. My gut feeling is the elevated crosswalk is, is the first option. Other things to narrow the street, whether it's painted lines, or cones, or whatever, I think that's the other option. I think we also realize that Highland isn't as wide as one thinks it is when there is an event at one of those public places of business, and there's parking all over on both sides. There's not a lot of room for other people to drive through, and of course, they do slow down because of their perception. So, I think that's where I would tend to go. I need a lot more information to move forward, and I think our message does need to be, this is a, acknowledged as a citywide issue, not just a Highland Avenue. With all due respect to our friend Kate Lucas, it's not just a one-street issue. Thank you for your time.
Alden Witt.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody coming out here tonight and, and speaking on this for months. I mean, this is without a doubt a citywide issue. I appreciate the time that went into this whole presentation, that went into it. For me, this was never just a second ward issue, even though I am an alderman in that ward. This is a Middletown issue. And with the idea that I also want to see money, or see some information on the finances of what this is going to cost, but I would never think about supporting this unless this was going to be a pilot, to, to see where this can work somewhere else. And so, that's how I feel. I mean, if, I believe that this is going to be a pilot, to see what we're going to do, see how it works, and go from there. I don't necessarily like the idea of bringing the street out. The raised crosswalks I like. I'd have to see more of it, how it would look. I, you know, sort of, I don't know whether you can do what Tim had mentioned about, I mean, you don't want to make it look like a yard sale out there, but some way to temporarily tighten things up. So, that's how I feel. I would never have even considered this if this was only a ward thing. It's a city thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. It's always great to see the public here. Thank you for coming out. I'm going to make a motion to keep the public hearing open for written comments for 10 days. That's June 17th, 4:00 p.m., City Clerk's Office. You can send your, by email or written comments to the common council. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Alden Kleiner, Alden Massey, all in favor?
Aye.
We're now closed. We're going to take a brief five-minute break.